There we are, live on custom streaming service.
It's just loading, give it one second.
Okay.
Takes a bit of time. Great, you're all set.
Okay.
More live.
Okay, good evening everyone, this is the Village of Murmuranic Planning Board Meeting of December 9th, 2020. Our last meeting of the calendar year, but our first meeting of the Village of Murmuranic Municipal Year. And as a result of that, we have some new faces. So first, I'd like to introduce Ellen Styler, our new member of the Planning Board. She replaces Lou Mendez, who term limited off. And we also have with us Ashley Lay, who some of you may remember from a few months ago. Ashley is the new Village's Consulting Planner. She's with AKRF and she will be with us for the next year or so. Acting as our Consulting Planner, working with our Village Planner Amber. Amber, is it Noak or Novak?
Novak.
Novak, that's what I thought, Novak. Okay. So I hope everyone is well and we will start the meeting with minutes. We have minutes from our September 9th meeting. I have some comments on them, but before I go, does anybody else have any comments on them?
I have one very minor typo on page five. Item 2A, the second line should be site plan, not sit plan. And since we do not have benefit of legal counsel tonight. Let me just, Ellen, I'll mention to you, since these are minutes that we're discussing from September 9th, before you were on the Planning Board. I would suggest that you not vote on them unless you actually viewed the meeting online and wish to vote. But otherwise, I think this heavy lifting is going to be up to Kathy and Richard and me.
I think actually, Ellen, since tonight's meeting is so close to the annual meeting at which she was appointed, which was just Monday. She hasn't had a chance to sign the oath of office yet. So as a result, she can't vote on anything tonight. She's here to observe and to get familiar with the application before us, because by the next time we meet, which will be in January, she will be all set up with her paperwork. Right? Is that correct?
That's great, yes, thank you.
We spoke, I would have been surprised, because you can't just go into Village Hall and have Sally Roberts notarize your oath of office now because of the pandemic. So it's, there was no way that that was going to happen in like less than 20 hours or so. Okay, I have some comments, also typos, the gist of the minutes will fine. On page seven. At the bottom of the page where we're summarizing the process of the approval of the minutes. And there's several sets there. Each one of them, A through E, should have a sentence saying the following typos were noted. Just so that we don't go from minutes and then bullet, 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 bullet. And then on the first set, which is on the bottom of page seven, the third bullet is, I'm not sure what it actually means, but it sounds a little harsh. Don't mention Brian. And just having that bullet there is not relevant or to anything. And unless we can actually explain what it means, we should just remove it.
Yeah, I think the same thing on page eight, where we don't mention Brian and Christie. I'm not.
Now see, I didn't pick that one up. Oh yeah, don't mention Brian and Christie. Yeah, I'm not sure what that refers to. I did not go back and look at the meeting. But that, that, just having that little phrase on a piece of paper doesn't really read well. Anybody else have any other, thanks for picking that up Cindy? Anybody else have any other comments on this?
No.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended tonight?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Now Mr. Boney is not here, I'll get to that in a minute, but he should be marked on as recused. But he's not here to vote. Okay, I'll call the roll. Cindy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and as we noted, Ellen will be a voting member at the next meeting. Okay, so much for the minutes. The next item of business is a application from the Oriental Beach Club, address to be determined. The Planning Board has a site plan review in front of it. We need to open a public hearing, but before I do, I just would like to read an email from John Burney, who states, "I will recuse myself on this application because it concerns a adjoining property to my own property." And since this is the only matter on the agenda for tonight, he asked me to note that recusal for the record. So noted and becomes part of the minutes and I have the email for part of the file if we need it. Okay, so we have an application before us and before we ask the applicant to present it to us, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Richard.
The least I could do.
All in favor, let's just do.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Public hearing is open and who from the applicant will start the discussion should indicate appropriately so you can be elevated and whatever to panelists. I think you have to raise your hand. There's Andrew Spatz, wait, that's a young Andrew Spatz.
Where am I? Can you hear me, Madam Chair?
Yes, we can, I think.
Because I can't see.
Yes. Wait, where did you go?
Okay, very good. If we could, I would love to promote the other individuals who are going to be participating in the presentation. I actually have the easy lifting tonight, if that's possible. Should I give you the names or? Oh Amber, I can't hear you.
Oh yes, please.
Okay, if we could promote Peter Boscio, he's the Senior Project Manager from Studio JBD. Nunzio Pietro Sante. Michael Murphy of Murphy Brothers. Mark Sheehan, the GM of Oriental Beach Club. And Elo Comfort, who is the President of the Oriental Beach Club. Wow, that's a picture there, Mr. Murphy, woof, I got him through mine.
That looks like some.
Making me look bad there, I don't know.
Put on Tinder, I don't know.
Good evening, I think everybody's on. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Board. Before I start, I just want to preface and welcome Ms. Styler to the Planning Board. It's a pleasure to virtually see you. And also Ashley Lay and Amber Novak on your position as Village Planner. You all serve a pivotal role in this community, not only as a very active member of this community, but also as an applicant's attorney. And we wish you much luck with your endeavors and your new positions and a little role and we know you'll serve the community well. Again, Madam Chair, if I could begin, my name is Andrew Spatz, I'm the attorney for the applicant. And this is Oriental Beach Club, and I know there were some questions about the address. And hopefully, one day I'll have a big enough house where I have like 19 different streets that's by my property. But in the short term, I'm going to utilize 1025 Rushmore Avenue. But again, my clients can clarify any questions that you may have. The application this evening is for the replacement of an existing patio, installation of an overhang over the existing elevated terrace. By way of background, as many, many of you know, and the public who may be attending this meeting virtually tonight. Oriental Beach Club is a private beach club. Facility with dining and recreational uses, including beach, boating, tennis, swimming, pools, basketball and platform tennis. During the course of improvements, the existing patio that's currently there, inclusive of the walks and steps, would be replaced and it will be increased by 692 square feet, but will include a water retention system where none currently exists. I think that's an important part here. The improvements will enhance the functionality and flow of the exterior patio. The patio area will be fully handicap accessible. The net area increase is actually located away from the neighboring residential property. And it's located closer to the Westchester Day School where that property is located. And this was done so because it will complement the used, obviously, the Westchester Day School, Monday through Friday, when we hopefully will be able to return back to school. And the patio is going to be generally used on the weekends and when the school is not in use. And it was an important approach for the club to take, as we know, Oriental Beach Club is a very well-respected entity here in the community, respectful of their neighbors. So they made sure that any increase of this would be away from the adjoining residential property. Obviously, as part of this, there will also be new landscaping as part of the improvements. The improvements will also include the installation of an overhang, which will permit greater use of the outdoor patio during inclement weather. And also given our global pandemic provides additional options for outdoor dining. Now, documents, it was an interesting journey to actually get here this evening. And I, again, I thank several individuals who were on our forum this evening for making this possible. But we provided a lot of information for this application, which in addition to our normal application and short form environmental assessment form, we've got a completed site plan, exterior lighting plan, SWIP checklist, landscaping plan review checklist, photographs reflecting the as-is condition. As the improvements, as you could tell from the photographs, will certainly maintain the natural serenity and ecosystem that you now find on the coastal property. Obviously, there's also other various layout plans, existing proposed pervious surface plans, erosion control plans. That's why we have our engineer and our experts online this evening. So I'm going to actually turn it over to the pros. And welcome any comments that they may have or any questions that Madam Chair or members of the Planning Board may have with regards to the application.
Thank you, Mr. Spatz. It was a little confusing, the review, the initial review of the application. So tonight, we're going to get like an overview. If possible, we will type it for secret and determine secret and then send you to HCZM for an in-depth review before you come back to the Planning Board.
Understood.
Okay, so that's kind of what we're trying to accomplish today, but it would be good if we could hear from experts with regards to the the project. It was very nice that you started with one sentence, replace the existing patio, overhang. Because it took.
Only learn from the best, Chair, I only learn from the best. Being a parent before y'all before, I've learned it.
So thank you. Okay, so who's up, who's up first? Who's on first?
Let's see, who do we have, who do we have, hold on a second. Peter or Nunzio, would you like to walk us through the aesthetics and any?
I can start on the architectural, that'd be fine. Good evening, my name is Peter Boscio, I'm Senior Project Manager for Jefferson Group Architecture. We, I've been, I graduated in 1985 from Wentworth Institute with a Bachelor of Architecture. And I've been practicing since in the field. And don't get to present to too many planning boards, mostly that's done by the principals. But I have done a few in front of the New Jersey Planning Boards for a lot of my projects down south. So to begin with, we're here to represent or present to you, excuse me, the Oriental Beach Club, the addition along the backside of the, can I share my screen?
You need to get rights, Amber will take care of that.
You should be able to share a screen now, please let me know if. Okay, great.
Can you see that? Can everybody see the plan I have in front of me? Existing visual, okay. So to start with, this is, this represents a a copy of what's existing out at the Oriental Beach Club along the, what is the east side of the club? Southeast side of the club. Right now, it's a half radius patio coming and coming to the patio off the sun porch. Two sets of stairs directly off the sun porch and another staircase off on the left-hand side from that, from various rooms back down to grade. And there's a small, somewhat accessible ramp for handicaps accessibility. This represents roughly what the existing conditions are out there right now. What we're proposing along the backside of the club is a patio, is a renovation to the patio and a terrace level off the backside, off the back of the club. We're going to have dining on both levels. At the upper level terrace, it's approximately 1,193 square feet, which encompasses all the deck level, which is at the same elevation as the clubhouse. Again, we have, we're adding a service bar to the, to this addition, which is on the left-hand side of this addition. And a service station, which is on the right-hand side. The roof is covering the entire upper terrace area except for what is the service station, that'll be uncovered and protected. Right now, it's undetermined, but mostly we're thinking maybe an umbrella or some type of canvas covering. The shape of the lower terrace is changing a little bit. We're changing the shape of a little bit to connect to an existing walkway and to accommodate the dining. Nunzio, our civil engineer will, you know, expand on the amount of extended coverage for the patio. We will be adding full accessibility to this level and to the terrace level, which is not available now. The terrace, the new terrace will allow dining on the outside along the water view, which is not accessible now at that, at the deck level or at the main level of the clubhouse. It's only accessible down at the lower patio. So accessibility will be available to both levels of this, this new patio feature.
Peter, can I just interject for a second? I just want to make sure so the board knows, the layer, where you see 28 seats, that's existing right now. So there, there is a level there now, so we're not actually installing that. There's currently as-is that, that upper level, so the upper terrace that we'll call. And there's also that lower terrace. I don't want the board to be confused that there, this is something they're going to be building. There is right now, present, a, a upper terrace and a, a lower terrace. I just want to clarify that, because I know there may have been some confusion.
Yeah, that, that represents.
Interject.
That's what represent, that's what's represented right there now, yes. However, the upper terrace that's there now doesn't allow for handicap accessible dining.
Right.
The new terrace will allow for handicap accessible dining. So this is a quick rendering of what's intended along that backside of the club addition. We are planning a roofed area, coming off of a spring point that's there now. Keeping all the features, keeping everything that's, that, we're not changing any of the existing architectural features of the existing building. We're creating this new flat roofed area, which is going to be covering the upper terrace. You can see in the rendering, the concept for the service bar. The railings will be, are intended to be stainless steel with cable railings. Again, just to keep as much light coming in and dining. The stairs from the upper level down to the patio or down to the grade level and the handicap accessible ramp up to the, the new patio level are also illustrated in the rendering. The materials will be PVC or some type of wood or cladding. The deck is concrete with a stone veneer to match the stone veer of the clubhouse. So the intent is to try to keep it as, as much of the existing building features carried forward to the addition. Almost like, you know, it was their original. No windows, no door, there won't be any, any additional windows or doors added to this, to this plan also. It's wide, it's open. There are a few, we're adding some skylights into the, into the roof area. Trying to get light back into the clubhouse area because of the large overhang. We were concerned about having the existing rooms become dark. So we're trying to, you know, we're sensitive to that, we're bringing as much light back into the existing clubhouse through the use of skylights on that flat room. The service bar is seasonal, this whole area is seasonal. And Mark Shin from the club can explain that a little further if it needs be. Again, it's a service bar, it's not a sit-down bar. Just for this, dedicated for this patio dining area, well, the upper terrace and the lower terrace also. I thought I had some photographs available, I apologize, of the existing conditions.
Madam Chair and members of the Planning Board, I think that may have been provided in the, oh, there you go. It was that it may have been in the package that was circulated, but there's some photographs.
Thank you. Thank you. And I just want to, I just want to clarify. This project is a new standalone project. We have material in our, that was submitted from 2007 and 2017. That was confusing, it led me to believe that this was a continuation from projects that had started earlier.
But. Yeah, Madam Chair, I believe there was some confusion with that because there was certain documentation that had been requested previously. And certain documents that had absolutely nothing to do with the project at hand. And I do believe that attributed to some of the confusion. There was, the package was a lot more involved than it, I think it had to be. So I'll let Peter or Nunzio, you know, answer any questions to clarify that. And I certainly, on behalf of the applicant, apologize if it caused any confusion to the, the planning board.
Yeah, for the village, I'm going to apologize to you. We all, we all, we all suffered from some confusion here, but okay, we're clearing it up.
Yes.
No, we're, we're clean slate, we're starting over. So this has no relationship to any previous projects that were done and letters from the D E C from 2017 or whatever.
That was for the, the elevated paddle tennis, that has, and I know Mark and Elo can speak to that, those, that's all been closed out. And I'm sure our bill inspector could also confirm that.
Any members of the public who might have looked at the documents that were posted on the Village's website for this particular project? There are some, there are some documents there that are not related to the project. I don't know if, because they were submitted, whether we can remove them? That's a question for someone else. If we can, we will.
Sure, we will certainly, whatever documents that you would like us to, and we could even put it in writing officially, whether we hereby withdraw documents, blah, 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 blah. Whatever documents that need to be removed from the record will be more than happy to confirm that, that's fine, to avoid any confusion, absolutely.
I'm just going to ask Amber and Ashley if they could make a note of that as a follow-up item from, from tonight's meeting.
And I will absolutely follow up with Amber and Ashley in that regard as well. Item number one.
Andrew, Amber and Ashley.
A's, no, triple A, look at that. That's the kind of rating I want, alright.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Boscio, the architect? No, okay, who's up next?
I guess I am.
Nunzio, you have to speak up a little bit more to the, we can't hear you.
Alright, can you hear me now?
Barely.
And for those of you who are involved here, we've been joined by Dan Sarnoff, who's the Assistant Village Manager. Okay.
Nunzio, want to give it a shot and speak if you can?
Better now or no?
Not so good.
Do you have a volume control? Setting on your computer.
The alternative is, I believe, I'm looking at, I noticed, maybe, do you want to dial in and speak so we can hear you, Nunzio? There's a phone number.
That's a good idea.
I think my 12, my nine-year-old for that one, they're the ones who are teaching my tech support, yeah. Nunzio, do you want, want me to give you the phone number? Now we can't hear you at all, Nunzio, do me a favor, call 646-558-8656. Sound toll-free, bud. We got you. Sorry about this.
Okay. We deal with it all the time.
Must be a defective mic.
Nunzio, why don't we just try, if you can, on your cellphone, just call, call in and I'm sure they'll, they'll patch you through.
Andrew, I don't think he can hear you.
Any better?
Much better. Go take it, go now, here you go with it.
Nothing?
Perfect.
No, we can hear you.
We can hear. He muted us.
Is there anyone else from your team that was signed up to speak while he works out his technical difficulties?
Well, we do have Mark Shin, again, GM of Oriental Beach Club, may perhaps, I know we had some questions about the address. Elo, who's the President of the club.
What I could do is try to dial in, I guess, and use the audio from the phone.
Can you hear us, Mr. Pietro Sante? Because we can hear you perfectly now.
Yeah, you can also, we'll send a message in with the chat feature below to let them know.
Thank you, Dan. Somebody younger.
Nunzio, go, go back a little.
Peter?
Yes.
Could you call Nunzio, because he, I don't, he can't hear us. Can you call him on his cell and let him know, but please call in? And while you're doing that, just go on mute and Mark and Elo could address the issues that were raised before the meeting actually started with regards to the address.
Okay.
Okay.
The application came in with the.
No, for some reason, I can't, you can hear me? Alright. Let me, let me go back to the speaker then.
Can we mute?
Amber, can you mute him, please?
He can't hear us, yeah.
Yeah, well, if we mute him, then he will.
I got you, I got.
Oh, you got us?
You got it? Okay, let's unmute him. You got it? Okay, let's unmute him. Alright.
Technology beautiful.
Uh, he needs to unmute him, himself, can he, you can hear us now? You need to unmute yourself. We muted you while you were on the phone, there you
Okay, you got me, okay.
Yay, okay.
Okay, we, we, we got you, so basically, um, Peter, do you wanna put up that, uh, the screen? That you had before, you have my drawings on there, right?
Yes, I do.
You wanna, and I'll just go through it and you can
Sure, can I get back into the share screen? Is that still accessible?
Should be.
Amber, you're muted, there you go.
It should be, all panelists are allowed to share, so um, it, it should be good to go.
Okay. Can you see that?
No.
No.
Alright, how about that?
And, and you're clicking the big green share screen button?
Yep. Let's try this one. Can you see it now?
No.
There we go.
There you go.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, so, Peter, can you go to the, to S one?
S, SP one or S one?
SP, I'm sorry, SP one.
There you go, you're on it.
So, so this basically shows the existing configuration, A, uh, the upper, uh, existing terrace, uh, impervious surface, and the lower one is the proposed. And, you know, i- the majority of the additional impervious surface is to the left, which I guess is the southeast. There is, if you, if you look at the existing walkway, it's a little straighter up on top. We have to, because of the new stairs at the lower, at the lower patio, at the lower terrace, we we have to merge into that existing walkway, relocate a portion of that other walkway. So, when you, when all is said and done, at the end of the day, the, the net increase in impervious surface is six hundred and ninety-three square feet total. So, that's, that's the, the net increase, um, and, and the tabulations are there. Uh, if you go to um, SP two, I guess that's the demo plan. What are you existing in demo? So that shows our, our chain link fence and silt fence and erosion protection, and the items that are to be removed uh as part of the work. Uh, it also has the uh, uh, perk test table there that we, we used in, in providing for detention calculations. Uh, so that kinda is, is an existing demo plan of, of what we're gonna take out. If you go to SP three is just the details, we can go back to that, but SP four would be the proposed plan. And, and if you see in here, basically, uh, it's the same plan as Peter's plan. The only thing is we show five cultech units in the center underneath the lower terrace to connect and pick up uh the runoff from the entire new lower terrace and upper terrace roof. Plus a little more, we have a little, a little fluff in there for that. Uh, it was never, you know, basically it was surface runoff before. Uh, the way it's gonna happen is we're gonna connect a couple of the existing roof leaders into the water quality tank, which is labeled as number one, I believe. Uh, the, the top one by itself. And the runoff from the lower terrace is gonna run down to that perfect uh half moon perimeter. And there's a, um, a detail for a under drain or a curtain drain filled with decorative stone on top in that planting bed area. Basically, if you looked at some of the pictures, the original has precast concrete planters around the edge. So the club, although I guess you could consider it landscaping, it's more seasonal planting to go with the seasons. So we're getting rid of that planter and the wall. And basically leveling off and then sloping down to the existing grade. You know, with uh basically uh grass surface and a three or four foot wide planting bed for, to take the place of the concrete planters. So what's gonna happen is, from the edge of the building out towards the sound, the wa- it's gonna be a slight pitch and the water's gonna go into that drain around the perimeter into a pipe, go into a, a, a junction box or a little catch basin, and then go into the water quality unit and then into the cultech for storage and eventually percolate into the ground. So that, that's the uh, the, pretty much the, the, the guts of the, of the stormwater system. Uh, as you can see, there's not too much, you know, grading, that, that wall is maybe two foot high at the highest point around towards the, I guess, the north, uh, the northeast. But uh, other than that, um, you know, like I said, it's minimal compared to the, to the overall site, somebody was, was mentioning about the two thousand and seventeen project that involved the uh platform, uh, new platform tennis courts, reconfiguration of the driveway, parking area. And I think they installed about thirty or forty cultech units there for drainage, for additional drainage, so it's a much, much, much bigger project. So uh
Nunzio, just to correct, the previous one was a much bigger project, not this, I just wanna make sure that we
Yeah, no, no, I said, that's a
Alright, right. So, this is simpler, yes.
Yes, yes, much simpler. And then if you wanna go to uh, 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 SP three, which is the details for erosion control, this is all part of the SWIP plan. I've, I've gone through this with uh Keller Sessions, with Brian Hillibrand, the uh, the village's engineering consultant. So they're pretty much on board with it. Uh, you can see the silt fence, the hay bales, the, the soil stockpile, tree protection. I think there's one tree where, near where the existing ramp is on the southeast side that's gonna be protected, that's the only one that's really in the way. Just one, yeah, that one right there. Uh, uh, the other trees are further back away from the project. Uh, so, and then, and then SP five is the details which you'll show uh, how we're gonna get the drainers, the, the cultechs, all the uh stormwater details.
Okay, alright, thanks for the overview.
I mean, I wanna preface, I'm, I'm pleased with um, the due diligence, again, this wasn't just academic. Uh, what, we've been working on this for several months, and when we appeared before your, your board this evening, we wanted to make sure we had it, the issues covered, especially in light of its location. And I, I feel very confident that the forty-four policies that the L W R P covers will all be satisfied by this, this application. Um, especially in light of the fact that uh the incorporation of the water retention and, and complex system that Nunzio was making reference to.
Yeah, if you look at the, the, the detail, the second detail down, Pete, uh, Peter in the middle, the uh, what is it, number? Number five, like, number one, two, three, is it, the, the under drain detail? That, yeah, uh, yeah, so that shows at the edge of the terrace, uh, it's, it's, it shows a uh, an edging to, to define the edge of, of the lower terrace. And then there's gonna be uh, you know, grass over, uh, you see that little box with a pipe in it? That's where the water's gonna flow into, and then eventually that pipe goes to the, to the little catch basins inside that planting area, which lead to the uh, dry well units.
Um, one thing that you, you will have to provide, um, before you come back to the planning board, the next time would be a landscape plan. Uh, actually, AZM may need that as well.
Did we have, um, I think
We have a
I think we have one, do, do we have one, um? Landscape, oh, it was a plan review checklist, I, I
We gave the plan review, and what I, what I noted in that, when I filled it out, was although that rendering shows some plantings, there were, there were really never any plantings there, and, and the club wanted to go with, with the use, they, they were using the concrete planters to plant seasonal plantings, spring, summer, fall. And instead of doing that with those raised, kinda ugly looking, concrete planters, we're doing it on grade. And essentially, you know, swapping out the seasonal plantings.
Oh, that's interesting. Okay, um, um, I'm not sure how, we'll have to figure that one out. Our landscape architect consultant for the planning board is with us tonight. Um, normally, when people plant in the ground, they plant in the ground, you know, change out with the seasons. Um, and they plant for interest, uh, for different seasons, and since you're so close to the sound, they also plant a native species, and perhaps provide some, um, not only visual interest, but also, um, especially low shrubs that you would need there, you could plant things that would provide food for the birds, especially as they're migrating through. We're not, this is the first time I've encountered someone who wants to change the plantings out. To do a site plan, we normally have permanent plantings. Um, so that wasn't clear to us at all. Alright.
Would you want to, uh, share, would you like us, uh, for further clarification? You said that the landscape architect consultant's on, I'm trying to look down, I'm trying to scroll.
Susan Oakley is, Susan Oakley is here, um, I don't know
Oh, hi, Miss Oakley, how are you? That's something that we could easily coordinate on communications with Miss Oakley. Uh, we've worked with her in the past, and she's very responsive and, and provides good input, so we could absolutely do that, Chair.
Make sure that the planning department staff is also uh involved. We have to follow code and uh requirements when we do a site plan review. That includes the landscape and the, you know, uh, tree protection and stuff like that, so we're, we're gonna need to check what we need to do with an applicant who is, um, uh, basically proposing that they do seasonal plantings. Okay, cause this is, this is a new one, so. No precedent that I know of. Okay, but we can just put that on our, put it on our list of things to follow up on. AZM, who's gonna, um, will be stormwater management plan and, and other aspects more closely, might also have a comment about that. It, it goes with the site and review.
No, we, I, I would anticipate before we, before AZM, that we will absolutely be in touch with obviously Ashley, Amber, and Miss uh Oakley on that, we'll, we'll make sure that's done.
Okay.
For the comment and the input.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the uh, Mr. Pietro Santi, the engineer? I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly.
That's right, I think you got it.
It's very phonetic. Saint Peter, correct?
Peter, correct.
Nobody has any questions, okay. This is a good start, okay, um, Mr. Spats, you had, uh, you want to call up your next, your, your next presenter?
Sure, um batting for, cleanup, no, I'm just kidding. Uh, why don't we bring in our, the team actually from uh Oriented Beach Club, and I'd like to introduce the uh general manager and uh president, we have Mark and Elo, we're both present, and um gentlemen, you're on.
Uh, do we need to, do we need to have this group, this green shared, can we, uh, can we see faces, okay?
Yeah, so, so we have Elo Comfort, who's the uh, uh, club president, and Mark Shin, our general manager.
Okay.
I'm not sure how much more I have to add. I think for the club, this project, we are looking to replace a, a terrace that we've gotten eighty years worth of use out of, and it's kinda, it's reached the end of its lifecycle. So, um, we're not looking to do too much more, just add a, a little bit of a covered area so that we can get some additional use out of a spot that members really enjoy, you know. Uh, we're, we're hoping that we can make the most out of getting some nice views out of the sound uh, by using the terrace and hopefully extending some of the seasons by having a covered portion that we would be able to, uh, you know, kind of extend our seasons. So, really, that's uh, that, that's how the club kind of views the project. Mark?
Um, good evening, everybody, um, yeah, just along the same lines, I mean, um, you know, Oriented Beach Club is a, a private member club down here, uh, we really wanna keep our, our the, the building, the property, the facilities, uh, in the best condition they can be in. Uh, the terrace uh out there is quite old and has, uh, as Mr. Comfort said, has probably seen its useful life gone by. So it's really just, um, you know, looking to improve the aesthetics, ease of use, and make it more safer environment for our membership. Um, in, in an area that's uh, that does get a lot of uh use for the members, uh, for, for dining, um, in the season. That's it.
We feel it's going to be reflective of the environment and the serenity of the beachfront um, property. Uh, Mark, is there a way we could clarify the address? Um, the application that we have reflects uh ten twenty-five uh Rushmore and Avenue, and there was some discussion in terms of the other addresses that may be utilized for business purposes, mailing, et cetera, et cetera. I just wanna clarify that for the record, so that everything's consistent.
Yes, the, the uh, address on file in the village is that one oh two five Rushmore. Our mailing address, uh, I guess over the years, I'm not sure how it came about, but is, is the one oh five four Walton. Um, there's a couple of different entrances and exits at the club. Uh, I'm not sure how or when, many years back it was, but it's a mailing address and the proper address on file at the village is the one oh two five Rushmore.
That's, that's, that we were using, because that's the one that the, that we have in the village files. Even the application had Wal- the Walton one, so it was a little confusion from the get go on everything, like, where are you now? We know where you are. Okay, thank you very much, so, uh, we'll use the legal address that's filed with the village.
And we also have with us, uh, Michael Murphy, a very distinguished individual here in the Soundless Shore who needs very little of any introduction. Michael, I don't know if you wanna add anything to the dialogue, but
Uh, Murphy Brothers Contracting, located in Maranek, New York, the village, uh, delighted to be a part of the project, and that's about it.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone from the planning board have any questions they would like to ask? And Ellen, if you have any questions, even though you're not a voting member tonight, feel free to ask your questions. Um, and the same thing with the staff, since I think we have clarification tonight, more so than we had from the paperwork, um, listening to people is much easier and looking at the pictures with people explaining them is much easier than, um, trying to go through the, the, the paperwork at this point. Um, anybody have any questions?
Kathy, I, I just wanted to suggest, um, in the past, when I've dealt with properties that were like corner lots and they had an address on both streets, we just listed as AKA and put both addresses on the project. And that, that would eliminate any confusion.
Yes, and I've had that in other applications as well, and I, as long as it's okay with our village planners and
Files, when, when we receive your files and we file them, we don't have both addresses, because the file names are way too long. We'll, we'll come up with a, with, you know, Oriented Beach Club or something, just for our own internal purposes, so we're not dealing with file names that you can't see on the screen. Okay.
Do you, you would like us using ten twenty-five Rushmore Avenue, just to make, for now?
Okay. If, if I may, in my experiences in the past, as building inspector and town engineer in Scarsdale, Harrison, all over Westchester County, we had, we had the issues. I, I had issues with that, I had to give addresses and whatnot. With the AKA typically the property address that's on file, and then the mailing address, just to get rid of the confusion, AKA, uh, in this case, we're doing the other street, Rushmore, whatever.
It's amazing how little things It's amazing how little things contribute up. Okay, if no one on the panel has any questions for the applicant, this is a public hearing and I don't know if there are any members of the public who are participating tonight who have any questions. But if you do, I think we ask them to raise their hands, is that correct? So that we can promote you to be able to speak.
If you're on the phone, press star nine to raise your hand.
I don't see any raised hands from audience attendees.
Okay, so then let's move on to the item of, we need to type the action under SECRE. Our planning staff has recommended a type two action and I'm going to ask them to explain that to the board.
Sure. So the, the proposed project involves less than 4,000 square feet of gross floor area. It's a modification to an existing non-residential accessory structure. So it clearly fits in the definition of a type two action per section 617.5C9.
Anybody have any comments or questions for Ashley with regards to that determination? No, then I need a motion to type this action as a type two.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay. Yes, you know, I can, I can join in here too, but I do too. Richard?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I, yes, as well. And I guess we show Ellen as a non-voting member or something. You figure it out for the minutes. Now, we can also do a declaration of, this wasn't part of what Amber, I mean, Ashley and Amber recommended to us as far as type two, we don't have to do anything. It's, there's no SECRE to do, right?
Right, that just ends the process.
Ends the process. So that means that you all are free to move on to HCZM. Mr. Spats, you may not know this, but people have been going to BAR for sort of an initial determination before we finalize the site plan, so we don't have any confusion with BAR making changes to approved site plans. So, right, so you, so you can go preliminarily to BAR as well and, and see, you know, what their comments are and then you can get their comments and if there's any, you know, discrepancy and changes, then we can make them and we don't run into problems down the road. We're trying to make this efficient and streamlined, this process.
The roadmap, so that I can advise my clients accordingly, we would appear, obviously, with the HCZM. Do we have dates at Amber or Ashley? Do we have dates for 2021 for HCZM yet?
Yes, Amber put together a calendar.
Sorry, I was, I do have a calendar that's going to be released publicly by the end of this week, you know, barring any.
Listen, it's like the Fortnite updates and my kids are anxiously waiting. I'm waiting anxiously for the calendar, planning, zoning.
Yeah, yeah, should be up publicly by the end of this week, but if you have questions about a specific date, you can also email me and I can give you.
I definitely will. And then we'll also appear before BAR and then full app it back before this fine committee. And when do we think planning, do we have a date for planning now for January? Is that towards the end of the month or?
That should be, is it the?
We meet twice a month.
Second and fourth Wednesdays of the month unless.
Seven.
So there's no second meeting in December.
Okay, understood. Okay. So we'll, we'll try to plan that accordingly and, and then round third and come right back. That'd be great.
You can.
We'll try, listen, I, I'm optimistic here, so.
That would be great if we make up for, you know, lost time.
Understand, understand, understand. Well, I don't have anything.
Any comments or anything? So thank you very much for a very clear and coherent presentation that really helped, I think, the planning board understand the project.
Well, madam chair, members of the board, we have a good team here and I, I enjoy working with them and I think, I think the village will be proud and the neighborhood will be proud of the final product. And even those that are seeing it from afar on, on the Long Island Sound. So we thank you. Wish you everybody a very safe holiday. Welcome all new faces. And we really hope in 2021 to actually be able to see you in person again, because I, I miss seeing you all in, in Village Court. Well, not in Village Court, but in the. You know what I'm saying, in the municipal hall. Yes, exactly. Anyway, be well. Thank you and wishing everybody a safe and healthy holiday.
Holidays to, to all of you and please everyone stay safe, wear your masks. Okay.
Thank you.
Good night. Night, everybody. Happy holidays. Stay safe.
Thank you. We'll go back to the planning board only and we have no other for tonight unless someone wants to bring anything up. In which case, we'll wish everyone a happy holiday and safe, happy, safe holiday. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
I'll second you.
Okay, and we'll just do a voice vote for adjournment. Okay, everyone, stay safe out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Time and I'm sorry I didn't introduce you. He snuck in there.
Good night.
Good night. Sorry, I was having technical difficulties logging in, so I'm sorry. Well, no, I, I was born in the wrong millennium. I should be used to all this, but I'm still adapting to technology eight months in, so. But thanks for having me and have a nice holiday.
Thank you. We'll see, we'll see you again soon.
All right, take care.
Thanks, everybody.